Well, if you're gonna speak. If there's a bunch of people that want to speak, then he can see the raised hands.
Got it.
We'll probably be able to do it the other way, too, but he just asked me about it.
Right, I just thought that might be a little easier because then we wouldn't have feedback issues.
John, are you gonna go over that with everybody in the beginning?
Yeah, and maybe if Rich is there, right?
Rich is here.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but, yeah, if members could, you know, raise their hand, Rich could go over and, and, and help them, you know? See, I think that would help out on the feedback issues if you're.
How sure you are? Yeah, you do. Go here. Just hit that. How you doing? No kidding? No kidding? Terrible, Zelinski beat me. Yeah. Yeah. That would be terrible, yes. That wouldn't make it a t- Not very much, couple strokes. Yeah, last two weeks kills me, but, hey, it is what it is. Hey, yeah, exactly right.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Good evening, thank you.
Hi there, this is Jody Shapie, you like coming in? This is Jody Shapie, am I coming in?
Yes, I can hear you, Jody.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hi, Cheryl.
Hello.
This is Mark Hamburg, testing one, two, three.
You're good, Mark.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you hear me, Jack? Okay, thanks. Do we have John? Does anybody know?
No, he's not here.
Haha, attaboy. Cheryl, can you still hear me?
I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear you.
I'm switching to these instead of those headphones.
Hey, Bobby, want to unmute?
Yes?
We were talking about using the raised hand, but unless you would wanna tell me if people have their hands raised there, but, you know, not everybody's there neither, so, the raised hand mode shows a little yellow hand on there, and then, I could scroll through and call on people, but, but unless you wanna try to keep it organized and call on people.
I think we can do it that way.
Okay, okay.
You gotta hear one, two, three, four.
Which way are we doing it?
Fourteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Are we doing the raised hand or we're doing the raising of the hands? John?
We're doing the Bob.
The what?
We're doing the Bob. He's gonna recognize everybody, anybody that wants to talk.
So we're just gonna raise our hands here?
Yeah, but he might not be able to see you, Paul, so Cheryl will have to let us know.
Right.
Scott, you're at home, correct?
Let's the games begin.
Correct, I am.
Thank you.
Waiting for supervisor Walland all yet, or?
No, I'm on.
Okay. Sorry, didn't get through all, all that I can see here, so. So we have everybody then? Not that it's six o'clock yet, but.
Yes, I have everyone.
Okay.
Cheryl, who's the other one at home? Um, we got Megan and Scott and Paul.
Yeah, Bob Ness.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I have six o'clock. So we'll call a meeting to order. Uh, was the meeting properly announced?
Yes.
Uh, please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, clerk will take role, uh, just as we get started here, now just be mindful, I know we'll have conversations and with, uh, more people in the community center, you know, try to raise your hand, and supervisor Gobarski will, will, uh, call on you since I'm not there, and, uh, you know, then we, then you can unmute, so otherwise we'll get a bunch of backseat if we have people unmuted, and, so if Cheryl hears some unmuting, hopefully she can try to correct it by muting some people. Otherwise, we have the amended agenda before us, do I have a motion to approve?
Hicahther, they're so moved.
Okay. Motion by Hicahther, do I have a second?
Second, Piscillini.
Okay, second by supervisor Piscillini, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against signify by saying nay. Okay, we have approved, we have an approved agenda. Okay, we have the minutes from May eighteenth, do I have a motion to approve?
From Hamburg.
Okay. And who was the second? Second by supervisor Quick.
There we go, yep.
Okay, so, any discussion or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay, raise your hands. Okay, minutes are approved. Don't think we had anybody signed up for public participation, uh, so we'll go on to announcement of meetings, clerk, please read.
Announcement of meetings, report of supervisors' claims, read by the county clerk, and appoint six supervisors to approve claims. Is Leeny Payler, Wes Zelinski, Alan Bork. Bork, one oh two forty, Baroud, one seventy six, Carlson, one fifteen eighty four, Edwards, one twenty, Gilner, two oh four, Gobarski, one eighty two forty, Hicahther, one sixty, Morgan, one twenty, RP's, two forty, SP's, one thirty one twenty, Payler, two thirty four seventy one, Quick, one sixty nine sixteen, Shapie, two seventy one ninety two, Wes, four oh five, Zelinski, eighty, Caldwell, one seventy three forty four, Crowsey, seventy five eighty four, Robertson, eighty eight ninety six, Thiem, fifty two thirty two, Townsend, forty, Waugh, forty, Worth, sixty eight, total three thousand two hundred fifty one nineteen.
Thank you. Uh, we have no claims or correspondence, uh, clerk, please read the appointment.
Appoint Brianna Zelke to replace Samantha Hicks to Coordinated Services Advisory Committee.
Have a motion to approve that appointment?
Zelinski moves through.
Morgan, second.
Okay. Motion by, uh, motion by Zelinski, second by Morgan?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay, raise your hands.
Um.
Okay, the appointments are approved. We have no unfinished business, we'll move on to reports and presentations, Derek, uh, emailed that he wasn't able to, uh, make the meeting tonight, so, uh, his report is there, so if he has any, we can, uh, get in contact with him and, you know, answer, so I don't know if there's any discussion on his report.
I see none here, John.
Okay. If not, we'll go on to the county manager's report.
Hi, good evening, so, I gave a pretty detailed narrative in my report to you, where I'm discussing the first thirty days, I plan to be quite busy with one-on-one meetings with both you and, uh, department heads, and it's to gain a thorough understanding of areas and, and kinda like the background of Adams County and, and what got us to where we are now with these projects. Um, I also touched on the American Recovery Plan Act, early, the early, I think it was my, my second day here, I had a presentation to the area, um, towns about the, the funding that's available, and hopefully, um, I mean, I hear their request with trying to get together, consolidate, and work on a project together. Um, there is a questionnaire that went out in an email, and we are starting to get responses back on those, it's a little survey that I sent out. Capital projects, I did get, um, brought up to date, uh, by Ron over the, the projects, and just to give you an idea, the contingency, I think originally you guys had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of contingency money, these are alternatives, things come up during a construction progress, where you have these contingencies or, uh, change orders, if you will, and right now that balance is roughly fifty thousand dollars remaining, out of the two fifty in there, I do have some change orders on my desk that I, I, I need to kinda look into to see, you know, what the cause was behind there, and I'm hoping to communicate with you, uh, why all these change orders happened at a later date, I just need to get a little bit more savvy with the projects. Um, the DA has moved into their area now as part of that, that project, and, uh, the boilers, and you may be aware, have been down for about six weeks, and the cause is an issue with the regulating temperature throughout the building, this week, they, they intend to get that up and running. Child support services has, uh, been temporarily relocated, that, that's gonna be, um, completed by Thursday, uh, so that's going on, and there is wayfinding signs that are, that, you know, to assist our public with trying to find child, child support services. And then I touch on the professional development academy, which is a training that I'm going through for leadership, and thank you very much for letting me start that before my start date, appreciate that. And a discussion with Von Bresen, I'm gonna always give you guys an update on any discussions or meetings I've had with them, and then the last section here is finance, and this is just stuff that Kyle's working on, as you know, you know, the budget process has begun, to, uh, tomorrow, the sheets are sent out to the department heads, and Kyle takes care of all that, we are going off for a couple of RFPs, one for maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and another one here for investment advisors to hopefully, take advantage of some rates that might be out there, they're favorable, right now it's just really bad all the way around with interest. Um, other than that, did anyone have any questions?
Cynthia, this is Bob, you are a little bit blurred, at least through mine, anyone else having that experience? Yeah, everybody is kinda shaking their head, and I don't know why, but, just so you're aware of it.
Any other question, any questions, so? Okay. Seeing none, then, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, the, um, the amended, uh, COVID nineteen plan, which is on here. But the resolution that, uh, stands there right now is that the county manager would, uh, you know, bring those, change that plan, go, and, uh, would bring those changes to the county board. The admin and finance committee did review this, too, at the, at the committee meeting, and, uh, we made some changes to there, because, uh, at the, at the time that the changes were being made, uh, interim, uh, man, manager, Byliki, uh, you know, wanted to bring it forward since he was just in interim position and, and get, uh, get the admin finance, so, uh, I know Mitty Dale is on the call, she could go through the amendments if, what has been changed, if you want her to, or, if there's any questions.
Can she give a brief overview of what the changes were?
Sure, I can do that. Okay, and, and as John said, the county manager has the authority to administer the management response to COVID, including this plan, and it did go by, to admin and finance, um, because Cynthia has, was so new, and, and Jim was just the interim. The policy was renumbered, so it's easier to find things as you go through the policy. There's a few little changes here and there for consistency. There was an addition made, just to note that there are variants, um, Public Health did review this, made some changes, um, did not, um, agree with all the changes that were made, but did, um, have input on this. One of the big changes was in section nine oh one, which is on page five, which has to do with quarantines, sick leave, and emergency leave. Under the Family First Corona Response Act, um, which was in effect last year, employers were required to give leave to certain individuals, paid leave, um, unless they were exempted. And then it changed, um, at the beginning of the year, and, um, it could be offered. Regardless, throughout this period of time, there was no reimbursement, um, automatic for any governments. That changed effective in April, and if you chose to allow, um, paid time off for quarantine, um, some, if someone's quarantined, if someone's sick, or if someone, this is new, is getting the vaccine, or becomes ill after they're, they've gotten the vaccine, you can reimburse the employee for their paid time off up to eighty hours, prorated for part-time employees, um, and you get reimbursed for it through, um, payroll taxes. So, um, this is brand new. It would be effective the date the plan was amended, which was June eighth, and if somebody is subject to a quarantine, if they are experiencing symptoms of COVID or have COVID, or if they are receiving the vaccine or recovering it, they would have, um, some additional paid leave besides their PTO. Okay, the next change, um, is section ten point one, and this is consistent with the CDC guidelines, and that's if you are, um, exposed, come in contact with somebody who has COVID nineteen, and you are fully vaccinated, you do not need to be quarantined, restricted from work, or tested following your exposure, unless you work in a jail. Special rules for jail employees, um, if they are exposed, they have to be tested, and they have to be quarantined. So the changes in section ten, um, just reflect that. The next change, um, significant change, changes were made to travel on page ten, consideration for travel in the US, again, it, it just mirrors the CDC guidelines, which are a little bit more relaxed in terms of going on vacation, um, and taking precautions, and if you go on an airline, of course, you have to wear, wear a mask. The biggest change is on section twenty-three, and that is requiring, requesting, um, and use of COVID nineteen PPE. Under the CDC guidelines, fully vaccinated are not required to wear fat face masks. CDC recommends that unvaccinated individuals wear masks. The policy was amended to all unvaccinated employees are encouraged to wear fat face masks, um, or face coverings, face coverings is, um, defined. Some of the provisions, um, of the previous face covering section were left in here. Um, if you are unvaccinated, you don't have to wear a face mask, if you are alone in a closed space, if you're outdoors, if you can social distance, but, if you are, again, if you're unvaccinated, you're encouraged to wear a mask, but there's no requirement at this point under the policy, unless your department has more stringent, um, requirements. Health and Human Services, for example, um, based on the jobs and their interaction with the public, may be required to wear masks, um, and again, that's part of their, their healthcare role. Um, law enforcement may also have some specific requirements in the jail, um, as those come down for the state, so that's noted. The other thing is that, um, all employees should be respectful of their coworkers' right to privacy. There are still fully vaccinated employees that choose to wear a mask, if someone has a compromised immune, system, the vaccination may not be as effective, so, uh, they may continue to wear masks. So individuals should assume, should not assume that somebody who is wearing a face cover, covering has not been vaccinated. Masks need to continue to be available for those who need to wear them. Um, aside from what's in this policy, we may have certain situations where we need to look at some additional accommodations if somebody who is, um, unvaccinated is not able to be vaccinated, is around people who are unvaccinated, we may need to put in some additional, um, precautions to protect them. Regardless, um, if you have been, if you are unvaccinated, you're encouraged to wear a face mask, um, but you have to social distance, if you're unvaccinated, you have to social distance, you still have to, um, to sanitize areas, um, to protect employees. So any, any questions?
How long does this policy, uh, last?
Uh, until it's amended.
So it's, it's ongoing to.
So it's, it's ongoing, didn't you say?
Right, right, it's ongoing. And right now.
Mindy, there's a stop date of September thirty.
Not yet.
What do you mean? Is that in that resolution?
It's in the resolution that we'll talk about.
Okay, alright.
Right.
Yeah, so technically, right now, the county manager has authority to the end of this month to maintain this policy. The policy would effectively evaporate if, if the authority to have the policy is not extended, and that's another resolution that we'll be talking about later. But everything that is in this policy is consistent with OSHA guidance. And we've been waiting for OSHA to update their guidance in response to CDC. And they did that last Thursday. And just, I can run through real quick what OSHA's guidance are. They encourage people to grant time off to get vaccinated, that's in this policy. Instruct any employees who are infected or unvaccinated, workers who have had close contact with somebody who has tested positive, and all workers with COVID symptoms to stay at home, that's in the policy. Implement physical distancing for unvaccinated and other at-risk employees, that's in the policy. Provide unvaccinated and otherwise at-risk workers with face coverings. Such workers should wear a face mask that covers their mouth and nose, that's in the policy. We say encourage instead of should. Then there's a provision about the, the need to put, to take additional actions to accommodate individuals with disability. Encourage and train employees on the COVID guidelines and policies. OSHA also suggests that employers suggest that unvaccinated customers, visitors, or face, or guests wear face masks. So particularly if an employee is in a situation where they are at risk and may come into contact with members of the public. So OSHA's recommendation is that the county put signs on the doors that say unvaccinated customers, visitors, or guests are encouraged to wear face masks, or should wear face masks. And then the other provisions maintain ventilation systems, perform routine cleaning and disinfecting are, are in the policy. So there's also a provision to protect. We need to implement protections for retaliation. And they suggest setting up a place for employees to voice concerns if they have them about COVID-related hazards. And I know HR has been fielding any questions that folks have. And then you do also have your workplace grievance procedure. So if somebody has a, a real concern about how things are going in their department or their area, they could file a grievance. So with what you have here, you're consistent with the OSHA that just came out.
Can I ask a question? This is Supervisor Shapie.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Shapie.
I'm just wondering, in the COVID plan, it makes mention of the Emergency Management Director. Who is that?
Jane Jervis.
I'm sorry.
Jane Jervis. She's the Emergency Management Director.
Just a minute. There we are. Not used to that. On page three, Mindy, under Response Coordination. We currently will be losing at the end of the month our Public Health Officer. So I, I understand we're making a change in the resolution perhaps, but at this point, does Health and Human Services appoint a temporary Public Health Officer? How does that, how does that work? If, if as the Response Coordination says, a Public Health Officer for Adams County in consultation with the county manager shall be responsible for coordinating Adams County's response to COVID-19.
If Kelly's on the line, she can probably address that. But I know other counties that have had their Public Health Officer leave have appointed an interim until the position is filled, who can serve that role.
Thanks.
Mindy, I am on the call, and that is what we would do if we aren't able to get someone in place for the timely leaves.
Thanks, Kelly.
Any other questions?
Yep, Jack has got a question.
Go ahead Supervisor Allen.
Once he, once he gets unmuted.
Okay.
Jack, you might still be muted.
No, still not coming through.
What's the question, Jack? Jack asked a question. I have, I have no idea what he said. Are you muted?
No, he's not muted.
We got something else. I think I heard what he said. We've got something in the background too. Sorry. Alright, Jack, let me try that again.
No.
What is it you want?
His computer froze up now, I think.
He wants to know if employees can ask for proof of a COVID vaccine.
No.
The answer is no, Jack.
An employer can ask for proof of a vaccine. And let's say we have employees who are, we believe, who haven't been vaccinated, are social distancing, as an employer, you could ask them if they have been vaccinated. The original draft of the proposal was to require employees to provide proof so that that could be monitored more closely, and that provision was taken out.
Okay. Okay. No. Nope.
And in terms of the public, we, we have to take their word for it.
Any other questions?
No.
This is Dave.
Jack getting clarified.
Clarify this. Jack wants to know if department heads are able to ask their employees for proof.
Did you get that, Mindy?
It, it's not, it's not in the policy that they can require documentation. They certainly have the right to ask, and employer has the right to ask. If an, if a department head wants to require, there's nothing in the state or federal regulations that would prevent that requirement. But I think they should discuss that with Cynthia.
The answer is no, basically.
Qualified, yes. How's that?
Yes. That's right.
Okay, qualified, yes, got it.
You can ask, but they can't ask for proof.
Well, by law, they could ask for proof. By policy, they should discuss it with Cynthia before they require the employee to provide proof. Because one of the things that was in this policy originally was to require proof, and the, and, and Finance Committee did not want to go that direction.
Mindy just gave a lawyer answer.
It's what I'm paid to do.
Mindy, I got a question. As, as far as OSHA's involvement, this is strictly advisory, right? They don't really have any authority in this case. You know, because as far as I was in construction all my life, and OSHA was the god, and they could do anything they want, so I just want to make sure it's just advisory.
OSHA does have the General Duty Clause, where they could cite employers for having an unsafe work environment, even if there isn't a specific standard. Now, for government employers, it's not OSHA. It's the, the Public Safety Administration, CSP, SPS. Anyway, there's a state agency that in, that enforces the OSHA standards. They would have similar jurisdiction. So theoretically, they could issue a General Duty Clause violation against a public sector employer who was not providing a safe work environment for its employees. And that state agency would look to the federal documents for reference. But it is at this point their guidance, and it is not a firm standard.
Okay.
Good, yes, I wanted clarification on that, thank you.
Did you get it?
Mindy, it's Pete, I have one more question. So if I understand this correctly, all an employer, all an employee has to say is I'm not going to tell you. And that's where it ends, right? According to policy.
At this point, yes. But if somebody, if, if, if somebody says, I'm not going to tell you if I'm vaccinated or not, I am going to expect that person to social distance. Because unless they've been vaccinated, they have to social distance at a minimum.
But you're saying, you're saying you're, you expect them to, or would they be required to social distance?
I think a department head has the authority to say, I don't know whether you've been vaccinated or not. And you need to maintain social distancing to protect your coworkers and the public.
Thanks.
Mindy, this is Jody Shapie, can I ask one more question? On number twenty-six, Emergency Declaration, could you give an example of when the and would come into play, or the or would come into play? Twenty, so it says, yeah, the Public Health Officer and/or Emergency Management Director may recommend the County Board Chairperson and/or County Board. So could you?
Declare.
Give a little bit, yeah.
To date, it has been the County Board declaring a state of emergency through resolution. But let's say we had a, that resolution was no longer in effect, and you had a extreme outbreak. The County Board Chair would have the authority here to, to implement and say, we've got an emergency, we've got to take measures. I think we're past that now. I hope we're past that now. But under that Emergency Declaration two, it's incumbent upon department heads to become, to carefully track their expenses relating to that planning and preparedness. Because if there's, if there is an emergency declaration, there may be funds available to reimburse for those additional costs. Which, which is what happened when there was the, when the initial pandemic hit.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing that, I know that Public Health Officer Leah Eckstein's on the call, and I know we normally have an update with the county manager's report, so Leah, if you want to give an update?
Sure, I can certainly do that. COVID-19, as it states in Adams County right now. Am I getting a bunch of feedback too?
No.
Okay.
Sounds good.
You sound good, Leah.
Okay. COVID-19 in Adams County, we continue to stay at a high level as far as the case rate goes. Though our cases are decreasing, we continue to stay at the high level. We were fortunate enough to drop down to a moderate level a couple of weeks ago. And we're hopeful to get back to that moderate level. Some counties are, in the state are even low community case level at this time. We are hopeful that with the summertime bringing outdoor events instead of indoor events, that that will decrease our cases even more. We are currently monitoring the Delta variant very closely. For those of you who are tracking any of the variants, we understand that the Delta variant is taking its toll across the ocean and some of our European countries. And it is anticipated to take hold in the United States shortly, as cases are being sequenced with that variant currently. Of course, we continue to track how the vaccine is working against variants. At this time, the vaccine is holding with all of the different variant strains because of how the vaccine was created and developed. It is able to protect individuals at this time against all the different variants that are occurring. The virus will continue to mutate and have variants, as all viruses do. It's just a matter of understanding how the variants spread differently. So with the different variants, some are more infectious than others, some affect populations differently than others, some cause a higher rate of death, so depending upon which variant is the most likely to be spreading in the community is how our cases will go and how the illness will be tracked. Our vaccine rates continue to stay low in Adams County. We have not yet met where we need to be to feel comfortable with any type of herd immunity in the state of Wisconsin, but especially in Adams County, we continue to be at thirty-eight point three percent of the population vaccinated. We have decreased our vaccine options in public health as we ramp down those options for the community. We do have We do have two consistent vaccination clinics that we are offering. One on Wednesdays at the Health and Human Services Building and then one on Fridays at the Rome Farmers Market. Um, in order to encourage individuals to continue to be vaccinated. We are in anticipation of the younger population being vaccinated. Currently, we do know that our youngest population are the most vulnerable to the virus. Um, so that it is even more critical for that population to have a vaccine readily available for them, especially in time for school. Um, that may or may not occur. Pfizer is hopeful that their vaccine will be. Um, receiving emergency youth authorization by the fall, um, but again, that is not a certainty. Um, so what that will look like for our students and families will be a challenge. Um, if we have a number of children who continue to um, be sick from the virus. One of the other new things that we are looking at in public health is um. Bringing testing in-house to public health. So as you're all aware, we did make the decision with emergency management to um. End our National Guard testing as well as the Rome Fire Department testing options. Um, as they were not consistent and challenging for individuals to track. So we are hopeful to be able to bring some testing to individuals at a more consistent rate. So people aren't as confused as to what their options are. We continue to receive requests for testing and it continues to be a need in our community. Um, additionally, we are working with businesses and employers to recommend what their safest. COVID nineteen policies should be and what they could look like. Um, in order to protect their staff and as well as the individuals that they are serving. Other pieces of COVID nineteen that we are looking at is um, how the virus is affecting individuals long term. So, one of the newest. Recommendations to our healthcare providers is to monitor individuals who are coming in with um, cognitive delays. Um, consistent headaches, consistent fatigue post-COVID nineteen. But trying to understand what that the virus has done to individuals. We know, of course, there's a significant amount of nerve damage that occurs with the loss of taste and smell. Obviously, that's affecting the nerve um, and the olfactory senses. So we also understand that it's also affecting the nerves in the brain and what that may look like. So we are beginning to see a number of individuals in the community who have significant long-term effects from COVID nineteen and. Uh, monitoring that closely and encouraging appropriate care from our healthcare providers when those situations arise. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't have a question, I just like to. I'd like to. Her hard work and uh, I'm sorry to see that she's.
Have Jerry. Yes, I'd like to know, uh, as long as we have Leah on the line, how many active cases do we have in Adams County right now?
Yep, let me pull up my spreadsheet. Um, we currently have. Eight active cases, that's isolation improbable, so those who are confirmed and those who are probable. And then we have eleven individuals in quarantine at this current time.
Leah, this is Jody Shapie. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Of of the individuals that are showing um. A symptom, well, not symptoms, but uh, but problems after they've had uh, COVID, what are the age groups?
It crosses all ages. That's one of the challenges um, is identifying. First of all, not everyone is tested. So it's challenging to know um. If that's from COVID nineteen, if their long-term effects are from COVID nineteen, at times they can, of course, pull an antibody. Who show, yes, they were infected. It is a historical case, it's not a current positive. Um, that we would be concerned about the individual being infectious anymore. Um, but we, we can identify that at one point that individual had COVID nineteen and the effects are. Um, attributed to that virus at the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thanks Leah, and as Supervisor Pisalini said, yeah, thanks for all your hard work and. Over the last year and a half for you and your staff and, you know, good luck on your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on then, uh, to the highway report. So the highway report uh, is included in the board packet. So I need a motion to accept that report.
Motion made by Hamburg. Seconded by Marge.
Okay. We got a motion, a second, any discussion or questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay and raise your hands. Okay. The highway port, report was accepted then, so. Uh, committee minutes, are there any questions on the committee minutes?
Seeing none from here, John.
Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to ordinance, ordinances, uh, start with ordinance number thirty, clerk, please read.
Ordinance thirty dash twenty twenty-one, rezoning request of a parcel, one acre. From A three secondary agriculture to R one residential on property located in the northwest one quarter of southwest one quarter. Section three township fourteen north range six east town of Del Prairie, Adams County, Wisconsin, nine nine five Gale Drive. Recommended for enactment by Adams County Planning and Zoning Committee the second day of June twenty twenty-one. Morgan Gilner, Shapie, Thies and Knack Reiner, quick.
Do I have a motion to enact?
Motion by Diller, seconded by Jody Japie.
Okay. We have the uh, ordinance on the floor, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay and raise your hands.
Twenty yes.
Okay. Ordinance number thirty is enacted. Move on to ordinance number thirty-one, when the clerk is ready.
Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty twenty-one, rezoning request of a parcel thirty-two point nine seven acres from A one dash fifteen. Exclusive agriculture with farm land preservation to A three secondary agriculture. On property located in the southeast one quarter of northwest one quarter. Section seventeen township fourteen north range seven east town of New Haven, Adams County, Wisconsin. Recommended for enactment by Adams County Planning and Zoning Committee on the second day of June twenty twenty-one. Morgan Gilner, Shapie, Thies and Quick, Knack Reiner.
Do we have a motion to enact?
So moved Barb Morgan.
Yep, Morgan. Or Chapey, sorry.
Okay, okay. So, we have ordinance number thirty-one on the floor, are there any discussioners, questions?
I have a question.
Marge has a question.
Okay.
Oh, boy. We can hear Marge, but you guys can't.
Could you repeat the question?
Marge is asking if, why this isn't a five acres versus the thirty-three acres.
Dusty Ariana, meeting.
I am. Uh, the original request was for the thirty-two acres. Uh, at the committee meeting, it was amended to the five acre request. The resolution that's in the packet and that was signed by the committee does. Uh, reflect that it was amended at the time. What was published on the agenda is the same as what was published. Uh, for the public hearing.
So which is it?
The five acres that the committee signed the resolution for.
Marge, was you able to understand that? It is for the five acre, the five acres, it's been amended to reflect the five acres.
Correct.
Doesn't it need to reflect that?
It does.
Correct, the resolution in the, in the packet does show the five acres. It states that it was amended at the committee.
The resolution in the packet reflects the five acres, Marge.
Okay.
All right, now we can hear you.
I have a question, please.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hamburg.
Um, I'm just curious, it says no property address, can you give me an idea where this is located?
Not off the top of my head, it's Frank Ward's property. Um, and I can't for the life of me think what road it's on though. And I don't have the paperwork in front of me. There should be a map in the, included with the. Uh, with the county board packet, if you click on the link.
It looks like it's.
Dusty, um, it's on the corner of Gillette and Fifth, on the northern side of it.
Thank you. I'm assuming everybody heard that?
Yeah. You get that mark? Okay, we're all set.
Any other questions?
Where does it say the amendment?
In the resolution and it. Oh, sorry.
See it there, Mindy?
On the agenda, if you click the link. Uh, the resolution that, where all the uh, committee members signed. I believe it's about the fourth or fifth, whereas down it says, after consideration at the committee. Uh, was amended to allow five acres. To allow five acres.
I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that on my copy.
It's on the screen.
We got too many people talking.
It's on the screen right now.
There it is.
There it is.
Amended to five acres in the town of New Haven, the last line.
Thank you.
Okay, John, I think we got it clear.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
All right.
Aye. Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay and raise your hands.
Twenty yes.
Okay, ordinance number thirty wasn't, one is enacted. Uh, when the clerk's ready, we'll move on to ordinance number thirty-two.
Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty twenty-one, rezoning request of a parcel of two acres from conservancy to recreational residential. On property located in the northeast one quarter of northeast one quarter, lot thirty-five of CSM six four three. Section thirteen township sixteen north and range six east. Town of Easton, Adams County, Wisconsin, two six three five County Road B. Recommended by enactment by the Adams County Planning and Zoning Committee on the second day of June twenty twenty-one. Morgan Gilner, Shapie, Thies and Quick, Knack Reiner.
Seconded by. There we are. Help me with that, Supervisor. Quick, thank you, sorry.
Who was first?
Seconded by Supervisor Quick.
Who was first?
Uh, Gilner, Supervisor Gilner.
Okay, we have uh, ordinance number thirty-two on the floor.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead Supervisor.
Well, I thought when I read it, it said it was recommended by the Township of Adams. And it's in the town of Easton, so I was questioning if that's correct.
It does say in their correspondence, the town of Adams recommended approval of the request. On them.
Okay. Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
Dusty, was it the town of Adams or was it the town of Easton?
Dusty, was it the Adams or was it the Easton? I'm trying, uh, excuse me, I'm trying to bring up the uh, the paperwork to see.
It was the town of Easton. It came, it came before the town also.
Okay.
Town also.
Okay. All right. Right, Supervisor Edwards has a question.
Yes, excuse me, although it says it's not in the floodplain, is flooding an issue on those, on that property?
Not that I'm aware of, um, there hasn't any reports of flooding and it's not in the floodplain. Uh, it's not mapped in the floodplain, uh, based on how FEMA mapped it.
Okay, I was just surprised to see it in there and then there's no mention of it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against signify by saying nay and raise your hands.
Twenty yes.
Okay, ordinance number thirty-two is enacted, ordinance number thirty-two is enacted. We'll move on to resolutions, move on to resolutions. Resolution number seventeen, when the clerk is ready.
Resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, to accept DNR surface water grant funding and create a limited term employee. Full-time hourly non-exempt position to implement the fourteen mile creek watershed non-point source watershed plan. Introduced by Land and Water Conservation Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Adams County Board of Supervisors. To accept DNR surface water grant funding and create a limited term employee full-time hourly non-exempt position. To implement the fourteen mile creek watershed non-point source watershed plan. The position will be contingent upon funding from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resource Grants. And will be under the direct supervision of the Adams County Conservationists. Recommended for adoption by the Land and Water and UW Extension Committee this first day of June twenty twenty-one. Ness Zalinski, Shapie Pisalini, recommended for adoption by the Ad and Finance Committee this fourth day of June twenty twenty-one. Wes Morgan Hickither, RP.
I'll second then.
Motion by P's, Rick P's, seconded by Paul.
Okay. We have the resolution on the floor. Any, any discussion or questions?
Jerry, polar. I, I understand the way I read it, that there is a three-year sun, sunset clause on that. Will that be adhered to or will that be a full-time permanent county employee?
Uh, we only have, this is Kason, uh, County Conservationist. The funding will run out after that treat, third year. At that point, we'd have to apply for another grant.
Uh, this is uh, Supervisor Pisalini. Alex has invested uh, fifty-seven thousand dollars into sponsoring that. So they're coming up with the other part of the grant.
So there's no cost to the county?
Correct. The only cost to the county would be our staff time training and working alongside this employee to complete the project.
And what happens after the three years?
Uh, we continue to look for further funding or this employee's, time ends, I guess.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay and raise up hands.
Taylor.
Twenty yes.
No, Taylor.
Supervisor, Supervisor Taylor was a, a nay.
Yep.
Nineteen yes, one no.
Yep, that's correct.
That is.
Okay. Resolution number seventeen was adopted. When the clerk's ready, we'll move on to resolution number eighteen.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-one, third amended resolution to implement COVID nineteen emergency plan, emergency management plan introduced by the Administrative and Finance Committee. Be it further resolved that based upon the information available to the board and the ongoing threats posed by the spread of COVID nineteen, the period of emergency originally adopted to expire in July twenty twenty and extended to December thirty-one twenty twenty and further extended until June thirtieth twenty twenty-one shall be further extended to September thirtieth twenty twenty-one unless sooner terminated or extended by further resolution of the board. Be it further resolved that all actions heretofore taken by the board and other appropriate public officers and agents of the county with respect to the matters contemplated under this resolution are hereby ratified, confirmed and approved. Recommended for adoption by the Administrative and Finance Committee this eighth day of June twenty twenty-one. Wes RP, Hickither, Morgan.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
No move.
Motion by, um, Hamburg, seconded by Morgan.
Okay. Uh, we have the resolution on the floor. Are there any discussion or questions?
Uh, Hickither, I have a question. Uh, I'm, I'm thinking about the portion that says approval of the Administration Finance Committee. And I'm wondering if you, if we're into a tight situation, uh, how does that committee meet in time to deal with the situation? Uh, uh, an emergency situation with COVID. I mean, in other words, the county manager administrator and the public health officer used to coordinate with just, uh, the chairman. Now they have to coordinate with the entire administrate, administrative and finance committee, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm just concerned that seems a little bulky.
But, I guess, if I might.
Yes.
Just kind of a qualification. In, in the plan itself, there is that, there's still that provision that allows the, um, public health officer, county manager and county board chair to, um, act on a time-sensitive matter or also, um, if there's an emergency. So if there's a time-sensitive matter and you can't get the committee together, they could take an interim step. Otherwise, any changes to the COVID plan have to go to the, um, full committee. Admin and Finance Committee to review. If you can call one that quick, twenty-four hours.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Whoops, go ahead.
Jordy.
Okay. I was just curious, what, what happens if this get approved? What are the consequences?
Well, if it doesn't get approved, the consequence is that it, the plan sunsets on June thirtieth. As of right now.
And all meetings have to be held in person with no remote attendance because that is required by, um, County Board Rule eighteen.
Yep.
And no employees would get any COVID leave for being, going to get vaccinated or if they came down and were affected by COVID. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I see none here.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed signify by saying nay and raise your hands?
Taylor, no. Oh, and Larry, Abroot also a no.
Okay, eighteen yes, two no. Abroot and Taylor.
Okay. Resolution number eighteen is adopted. When the clerk's ready, we'll move on to resolution number nineteen. Clerk, please read when ready.
Resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, recognizing second amendment rights of the citizens of Adams County, Wisconsin, introduced by County Board Supervisor Jody Shapie. Now therefore be it resolved by the Adams County Board of Supervisors that the board and county do hereby, number one, recognize and support at all times whether during a state of emergency or otherwise, second amendment rights of the citizens in Adams County as guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. Number two, to oppose any state and federal government attempts to illegally infringe upon right, the right to bear arms through legislation or administrative rulemaking. And number three, to direct staff to review county policies to confirm their consistency with the right to bear arms as protected by both the federal and state constitutions. Recommended for adoption by the Adams County, by Adams County Board Supervisor Jody Shapie this seventh day of June twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Motion by Jordy, seconded by Taylor.
Okay, a, and as we, okay, so we got the motion on the floor as we move through this. You know, please raise your hands to be recognized and I know we'll start out with Supervisor Shapie and, uh, please refrain to one comment, uh, you know, period. If you're done speaking, we'll move on to the next one. And if you want another comment, uh, I'll try to get everybody in before going, you know, to a second round of comments. So, so just be, you know, respectful of others and, uh, uh, please don't interrupt them when they're speaking, so. So Supervisor Shapie.
Thank you Chairman West. I'll attempt to make this short. As a sponsor of this resolution, I would like to explain why this resolution comes before the full county board. I've been addressed in the past few months with concerns from the community that they are worried that their constitutional rights may come under attack. In particular, they are most concerned with their second amendment rights to keep and bear arms. It is a fear they were specifically addressed by their county representatives. People from our county are worried vision of safety to themselves, their loved ones, their property and their community. This is a support resolution and it's a confirmation to the law-abiding citizens of Adams County that we, the board, acknowledge and support their second amendment constitutional rights. I created a poll to allow me to be aware of how the citizens, citizens of Adams County felt about the following statement. As a voting resident of Adams County, I would like the Adams County Board of Supervisors to go on record in support of my second amendment constitutional rights. The results of this poll indicate that over seventy-five percent of the Adams County citizens that responded agree that they would like for the Adams County Board of Supervisors to go on record to rec, support their second amendment constitutional rights. I'd like to address some misconceptions that need to be brought to attention. It was mentioned that firearm sales are at an all-time high. Perhaps we should consider why sales have increased. Could it be that more and more law-abiding people are concerned with their safety, their ability to defend their safety, the safety of their loved ones and their property? In relation to gun violence, the rise in gun violence is not related to law-abiding citizens. The mass shootings that I'm sure will be brought up are not of law-abiding citizens protecting themselves and their property defensively, but by criminals using firearms offensively. That is and always will be a very distinct difference. It was stated that our voices and opinions at the county level do not matter to our state and local governments. The very opposite is true. The state and federal government do listen to their local municipalities. Our second amendment rights are a natural right, not a privilege. The citizens of Adams County want reassurance that their right to keep and bear arms is not infringed upon, infringed upon, and that the board supports that right to self-defense along with indicating those facts to our state and federal government. It was indicated that by passing this resolution, we're doing something redundant and unnecessary because as elected officials, we take the oath of office. We need to reaffirm to our constituents that we support them in their second amendment rights because we're letting our constituents know that we, each one of us, recognize and support them, plain and simple. It's not about you and me, it's about we, we the people. It's been said that this resolution is a partisan issue. Our bill of rights and the constitution are for every American regardless of political affiliation. Please do not diminish the validity of this resolution by stating it is a partisan issue. This is a nonpartisan support resolution, nothing less, nothing more, that states we, as the Adams County Board of Supervisors, recognize the concerns of our citizens and their second amendment constitutional rights and that we support them, excuse me. We are not the only county in the United States that is being asked by its citizens to stand up and support them in their second amendment constitutional rights. There are many counties in Wisconsin and in other states that have already passed similar resolutions showing support to their citizens. I ask for you to support this resolution and ultimately to support your constituents. They are why we place great trust in our actions. Thank you.
Supervisor Hickither.
Thank you. Um, couple of points. And I made several of these at admin and finance, but I'll go at them again. Has anyone in Adams County or the state of Wisconsin been denied their second amendment rights? The obvious answer is of course, no. And while, while Supervisor Shapie says this is not partisan, Republican Representative Dave Murphy from Greenville said that the state assembly is considering a similar thing because the Biden administration is, I quote, scaring and making us feel like our second amendment rights are not going to be upheld. That to me is partisanship. There is of course no effort to eliminate the second amendment. There's no effort to confiscate anybody's guns. And basically, it is, it is based, every one of these amendments is sponsored by the Republican Party. Now, as I said at admin and finance, Chairman West has made a great effort, I believe, to keep partisan politics out of the county board. We've tried to do, make decisions that are data-driven and based on need. This resolution does not meet either of these criteria. It sends the wrong message, it's divisive. And I would point out that the admin and finance committee voted for one to reject it. There was a poll in the paper, not scientific. Basically just an ad and if people wanted to respond, they could. The sheriff has already said at PS and J that this resolution has no enforcement ability. So basically, this is a frivolous resolution that I think is one hundred percent not necessary. It's divisive and I'd urge members to vote no. Thank you.
Supervisor Hamburg, I see.
Thank you. Um, I'm in full agreement with Mr. Hickither, Supervisor Hickither. One of the comments that, uh, Julie had made that I would like to accent on as well is the county does not act in a vacuum. Our state legislatures and our, uh, uh, state elected officials listen to their county boards. I agree with that statement, but they may listen to us, but they don't often act to what we recommend. And what I would like to point out with that was that the last election in November, many, many counties passed the referendum for fair maps. And the Republican Party has chosen to, uh, uh, throw that out. They don't recognize that. So that's partisan as well. I do agree with Pete saying that this is a partisan issue. As a history teacher, as a political science major, as a teacher of civics for, uh, twenty-five years at the Wisconsin Dells High School, I find my constitution and I find my bill of rights, every one of those amendments equally important. I don't feel that the second amendment is any more important than the first amendment. I don't feel the second amendment is any more important than the fourteenth amendment. And if we start doing this for one amendment, what's going to stop us from saying we want to be an LGBT sanctuary? Or we want to be a sanctuary for illegal immigrants? We've seen it done in California. We've seen it done in cities throughout the United States. Are we going to go on a political whim, uh, based on a survey in the newspaper? I am, I am vehemently opposed to this because I believe in the constitution of the United States and the bill of rights in its entirety. Not one amendment. Thank you.
I spoke at admin finance and I have a lot of same things that Mr. Hamburg just stated, but one of the things I wanted was, if we're going to do this, we should table it and bring it back to, and have this include our whole constitution and, and bill of rights instead of just this one. I don't put the second amendment above any of the other rights that we currently have. And I also swore the oath when I got here that I would defend the constitution of the United States. I, I, I'm more upset that we would waste time talking about this instead of talking about seventy percent of our children is county live in poverty and what are we going to do about it? Or why aren't we looking at more economic drivers to get companies here to support that type of stuff through our economic development? And we're talking, we're using this time. We approved a sixty-one million dollar budget in less than ten minutes once without any, without any real discussion. I think those are the things that we should be discussing in length. Not approving this and then next month approving a thing for voting rights and the next one for freedom of speech. So that's where I'm at with this. Again, I'd like to either send it back and include everything or not to do this at all. Thank you.
Sure. Pull her. Taylor, I can't remember how to say your name.
I usually say Taylor Bob, but you, you just taking any stab at it you want. Okay, I mean, I too took an oath of uphold the constitution of the United States more than once. And I believe in the second amendment extremely strong. I think we are in an area that promotes hunting and tourism together. I think we would be shooting ourselves in the foot if we decided that, we as a county do not want to promote the second amendment when we have tourists coming here to hunt and whatnot. And the first amendment and these other amendments are extremely important also. But they're not being under attack right now. The second amendment is. So I think we should pass this.
John, Marge wants to weigh in and then, uh,
Okay.
After her.
Okay.
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to say I agree with Supervisor.
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to say I agree with Supervisors Hickethere, Hamburg, and Rick Pease. I don't feel that singling out one amendment over the other is what we should be doing. As Supervisor Pease has noted, we want to support the Constitution, we should do it in totality. As far as Supervisor Shapie's saying that 75% of her so-called poll agree with this actually, what are the actual numbers? I could say 75% of 10. And I say vote this down. Thank you.
Supervisor Gobarski then?
Thanks, John. Regarding the Second Amendment, I think Jury had said it's been under attack, it certainly has been compromised by some cities. Maybe not in Wisconsin, I don't know. I can't address that accurately. But certainly, gun ownership is restricted in New York City, Chicago, cities in California. That certainly does not coincide with the Second Amendment. And they still have a tremendous murder rate, incidents with guns, et cetera. So, I think if there's a reason to separate out an amendment, it would be those types of things. The fact is that the Second Amendment, or this resolution, is written that says we support the Second Amendment. It doesn't separate out anything else. It says we support the Second Amendment. It doesn't say we don't support all of them, it says we support the Second Amendment. And I don't see where there's any harm in supporting the Second Amendment. And we're going to get back to the partisanship. Last fall, we went through a gerrymandering thing, and that certainly was a partisan thing. We had already voted on it, we had already sent it to the state, and we went ahead and had a referendum, a non-binding referendum, and sent it the second time. So, when you start talking about partisanship, we did it then. The fact is that we can't, if in fact you think this is partisanship, why can't we do it on the same merit that we did it last fall? And I struggle with that. This county board went on record and sent a non-gerrymandering type of thing to Madison, and then we went ahead and did a referendum after that and sent it again. So we repeated, we did the same thing over again. And this resolution now, we talk about supporting an amendment. We're not rewriting it, we're not putting down any others. We are supporting the Second Amendment, and I don't think that's a bad idea. I think it's actually a wonderful idea that this county would go on record and say we support the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Any other supervisors that haven't spoken yet?
Are you?
John, I'd like to say something.
Supervisor Zalinski?
Okay. So, I just want to start by saying I'm a gun owner, I support the Second Amendment. I don't like the message that this sends about Adams County. I have lived here for 40 years, worked in the schools, spent time in and out of the county, talking with people. Adams County has a reputation, like it or not, it's not always positive. And I think if we want to go on record, we're going to end up acting like we want to attract Second Amendment rights, tourism, if you want to call it that. I don't want to go to the grocery store and have a guy with his six shooter strapped to his waist, or going to bars, have their ARs slung over their shoulder, or on the backs that are UTVs. No. I'm sure many people are very responsible and can do that, but that's not the community I want to live in. I don't want to live where I know people around me are carrying weapons, even if it's legal. And I think if we send the message that, hey, we're a Second Amendment county, we're going to encourage that kind of tourism. I also believe it's not going to do anything for our economic development. We're not going to get industry or businesses to come in here if that's what we're going to be selling our county. So, I just want to go back to, this is not, we're not doing anything to better our residents by passing this. We're just trying to make a political statement. And I just want to address the misinformation about how they're coming for the Second Amendment. They want to change it. Do you know what's involved in changing the Second Amendment? It's not happening. Every time we have a Democratic administration, the gun lobbies, the Republicans, say they're coming for your guns, and gun sales goes through the roof. So, you might believe that, you know, it's for protection, and it may be for most people. But when the sales go the way they're going, it isn't people buying one gun. This is people stocking up on guns because of fear. And I think when you pass something like this, you're just encouraging that fear. So, I would encourage you to vote no on this, for the way it looks for our county.
Any other supervisors willing, wanting to weigh in on the first time? Okay, seeing none, Supervisor Hamburg?
Thank you. I'd like to add a rebuttal primarily to Supervisor Gobarski, Supervisor Taylor. This is not the only constitutional amendment that's being attacked. Right now, today, and Bob, you recognize different states, different cities, different areas where the Second Amendment is being attacked and gun laws are being changed, and I agree with what you're saying. I also want you to recognize other states, then, where voting rights are being attacked. Why can't we use that as an amendment and become a voting sanctuary here as well? It goes back to my original statement. We all on the county board took the oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and not single out one separate amendment. That's exactly my point. You know, there's other parts of our amendment that's being attacked. Voting rights is one of them, civil rights is another. Freedom of press is another.
Jody's on, John.
Supervisor Shapie?
Yes, may I offer my rebuttal?
Yes.
The reason that this resolution is coming in front of us is because our constituents are asking us to support them. That's the primary reason. They didn't talk about anything else, they're talking about the Second Amendment. Some of the constituents have pointed out that our law enforcement covers a large area and could be minutes away from providing aid when every second counts. Knowing that the law-abiding citizens' Second Amendment rights are formally recognized and supported would give them peace of mind should the need arise to ever protect themselves or their property. Our mission statement says to provide high-quality services in an economical, fair, professional, and courteous manner, enhancing and protecting the health, welfare, and that live and work in Adams County. The perception of our constituents is that they wish to have their Second Amendment rights to keep and bear arms, supported by us. This has zero cost, it is a support resolution. The fair maps cost us a pretty penny. This costs nothing to tell our citizens that we back them on their Second Amendment rights. Yes, there are other things that we could be doing. This is what's coming ahead of us. I would ask for our constituents.
John?
Thank you.
Pete's on.
Supervisor Hickethere?
Well, I guess I challenge some statements here. Our constituents want it. I mean, we have no way of knowing how many constituents in the entire county want this. That's just a statement, it doesn't mean anything. Also, you say it costs zero amount of money, it's also zero enforceability. State and federal laws will take precedence over anything the county does. So it's really, to me, a frivolous amendment. I'd like to think, again, I'll go back to what I said before. I think we've tried to stay out of partisanship. Bob, I got to challenge one thing you said. The gerrymandering thing was not partisan. It's become partisan at the state level, but in terms of the county board, it wasn't partisan. We made it, I think it was 20 to nothing was the vote when we made the original one from the board. So, that isn't partisanship, that's everybody saying, hey, yeah, we agree with that. But, again, I would say, who are the constituents? Who identifies the constituents that are demanding this? Because I'm not hearing it from anybody, and the people that have talked to me say, absolutely don't do this. It's the wrong message, I'd like to think we're better than this. Thanks.
John, Jury, Taylor is on.
Supervisor Taylor, I see that. Okay.
I actually did talk to several people. I didn't have a survey like Jody did, but I worked there at the Lumber Yard part-time, I talked to people that come in there. I go down the corner pump every morning, have coffee, and I had numerous people tell me that they wanted the county to pass this. And these people, I'm sure, sent emails to Jody, that she's on, you know, they're on the same survey. But I did have numerous people that wanted this passed, and I guarantee you, as you say, it's unenforceable. But at least it does let the state know how we feel. On the other hand, I'd like to, as far as being worried about people walking around carrying guns, I know there's more people besides me in this room that have concealed carry. And when I'm in a grocery store, I'm glad to know there's people around me that do have concealed carry. Because if you have somebody that walks in there and starts to do one of these mass shootings, maybe somebody will stop them. Thank you.
Supervisor Morgan is on, John.
Supervisor Morgan?
I had about eight people from my area contact me, and they were against this. They didn't think it was, they thought it was, like some people said, frivolous. We should be protecting all the amendments, not just one. So I don't, my vote is no.
Supervisor, can I speak?
Do you get that, John?
Who was that?
I'm not sure.
It's Pease, can you hear me?
Oh, it was Scott.
Okay.
Scott Pease.
Yes, Scott. Supervisor Pease, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I did have a couple constituents, and they both said they wanted to have this passed. They had some good points, I'm kind of on the fence on it right now. I think that it's a good thing for us to say that we're supporting the Second Amendment, but I also agree that when we raised our hand before, we got, well, during we were getting elected for this position, that we said that we were going to uphold all the Constitution, like Rick and a few others have said. So, I'm kind of leaning that way. Thank you.
Okay, John, Jody, you'd like a rebuttal?
Well, I'm trying to let everybody else have a turn, and I was going to try to limit it to
John, I actually didn't want to rebut, I just wanted to give the counts on the poll. It was 71 in agreement and 23 against. Or agree and disagree, I just wished.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wallandall, can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. I've had several constituents contact me that are in support of this and asked for me to support it. I also agree with, I agree with all of everything that's being said. But with taking that oath to uphold the Constitution, I think what Gobarski said about if we're saying we uphold the Constitution, that means we support all the amendments. So, I guess by saying we support all the amendments, the vote would have to be yes. If you vote no, would that mean you're not supporting the Second Amendment?
John, can I respond? This is Pete, I just want to say one thing. The resolution is on the Second Amendment, it has Jody, I mean, not Jody, I'm sorry. Megan, I think you're, that's not the correct understanding of that.
Can we call a roll call vote, please?
No, seeing no other comments at this time, I'm going to have the clerk do a roll call vote, please.
Allen?
No.
Brock?
No.
Baroud?
No.
Carlson?
Supra, I don't mute. No.
Edwards?
No.
Gilner?
Yes.
Gobarski? Hamburg?
No.
Hickethere?
No.
Morgan?
No.
Ness?
No.
RP?
No.
SP? SPs? Scott? Zalini?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Quick?
Yes.
Quick is yes?
Yes.
Shapie?
Yes.
Wallandall?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Zalinski?
No.
I need Scott Pease yet. Do we know what happened to Scott? What do you want me to do with that one, John? What do you want me to do with that one, John?
You don't see him on anymore?
No.
John, it won't affect you. No, John.
Yeah, I guess just mark him as Yes.
Okay. Seven, yes. Twelve, no. One, excuse.
Okay. The resolution fails. Say it, Scott?
I'll vote no on that. Yeah, I'm sorry, my connection.
Okay.
We have 13 no then.
Okay, okay. So the resolution failed. Moving on, we have no denials, petitions. Do I have a motion to approve the claims? It's previously read by the clerk.
Motion, second by quick.
Claims are all in favor, signified by saying aye. Raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, signified by saying nay. Raise your hands. Claims are approved. Clerk, please read per diem and mileage.
Allen, 50. Bork, 61, 20. Baroud, 78. Carlson, 67, 92. Edwards, 50. Gilner, 78. Gobarski, 50. Hickethere, 50. Morgan, 50. Ness, 50. RP's, 50. S. P.'s, 50. Pizzolini, 50. Taylor, 68, 37. 69, 43. Shafie, 60, 64. Wallandall, 50. West, 64, 56. Zalinski, 53, 36. Total, 1,101, 48.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims? The per diem and mileage is read.
Motion, second by quick.
Did you get that clerk? Did the clerk get that?
Was that Edwards first?
Oh, no. No, Hamburg.
There's too much backbeat, I can't hear.
Hamburg, quick.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, motion by, motion to approve per diem and mileage on favor, signified by saying aye. Raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, signified by saying nay. Okay. Per diem and mileages are approved.
I'd like to make a motion, can a clerk correct any and all errors and to read back if the next meeting is so requested?
Do we have a second?
Seconded by Pease.
On favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried. Next meeting date is
July 20?
July 20th at 6 o'clock. So thank you all for being respectful when we were having discussion and and have a great week. It's 97 down.
Any question, John?
You too, John.
Okay.
John, have any idea when we're going to be back at the county boardroom?
Maybe September.
Okay, thank you.
The plan is on.
I gotta leave.